...work session, January 6th, 2020. The order, roll calls, Mr. Rich.
Present.
Penable.
Present.
Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
Mr. Seas.
Present.
Next we'll have a prayer of Mr. Porter and our pledge, Ms. Gilbert.
For God our Father and Heaven, we're blessed, we're thankful for the year that we have had in 2019, we look forward to the year 2020, pray for good things, for blessings on this county and the people of the county, we pray for good blessings on this nation. We are so divided right now, we just pray for your hand to be upon us all, that your hand will guide us as we go through our lives each and every day. Watch over us and guide us in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll need to approve the agenda of meeting.
You make that motion.
Got a motion. Say I got all in favor, say aye. All opposed? No awards presentations? And we haven't had anybody sign up to speak. Discussion items, number one, be Holiday Shores. We have had this on the agenda in the past, it's been brought to our attention by Marshall County, that this actually, back in the eighties, was it 1980? 1980. It was approved through Marshall County to take that Holiday Shores in, and agreed upon by Jackson County, for some reason, it never got followed through.
Now, this is not the complete community, it's not ours, it's just like a little 23-mile section of road or something like that.
Yes, it's just like-
60 acres.
60 acres.
Okay.
If they got Johnson got a slide, you can put it up showing where the Holiday Shores is.
Yeah, like you got one, we do.
I don't have one, I don't follow that.
Holiday Shores is a community past Mac Allen's on the left, and most of it is in Marshall County already, I mean technically, there's just when you go back in there and weave around in the water, a part of Jackson County-
When you get to the four-way stop, there's 60-acre block in there that's within Marshall County, but it's here, it's Jackson County.
The line comes down here, then it just swirled over to Madison County.
Your Marshall Shore line, where it waves and it comes in.
Come back.
You may need to-
You have to go into Marshall County to get back to it.
Absolutely.
So, in 1980, if I'm remembering correctly, both counties were in agreement that that be part of Marshall County.
Right.
For now on, not only the road, but the property itself.
Right.
And it never got changed over.
No, Marshall County's been maintaining it.
So their taxes have been assessed.
No, I won't say that yet, no doubt.
Always been a-
Jail plan.
Tax.
Yes.
Oh, I mean-
16, I think.
16 residents.
16 residents, I remember there was, I think it's 16 residents.
And where are they paying the taxes at?
Both.
Both?
No. Yeah, they're-
The taxes are being paid here.
Jackson County.
Jackson County.
And that one section is Jackson County.
In this one section, we're talking about the taxes that are being paid here.
So, if both county governments are still in agreement to do that, what do we need to do to make this a permanent thing? Or I'm sure we would have to have some type of public meeting or something to-
It's that little square, that's right above.
A.
Yeah, A.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
There's one lady over there that has two lots, she pays half her taxes in Marshall and half her taxes in Jackson County.
The house.
The house.
House.
Lot.
No houses on the lot in Jackson County, but yeah, it's just two lots. You're first Marshall County.
Yes, probably outside of that, one of our lots, probably outside that lot.
I just wanted to clarify, because Holiday Shores is a fairly big-sized community, when we say Holiday Shores, just a tiny little piece of, which would cut down on them having to respond to that tiny piece.
We really don't.
We don't?
I mean, they call, we do, but usually call Marshall County?
The kids that go, that live in an area like-
The Marshall County schools. Marshall County school bus runs the routes in there, yes.
Well, it seems to me, I need to look at this, but the only way I know to do it is with legislation back to change the boundary line.
Yes, sir.
So if both commissions are agreeable, then we can draft proper documentation for each commission to adopt, to get the legislature to do what they need to do, but that's-
Yeah, you are atop of the legislation, our legislators- I have talked to my legislator, and he's okay with it, but I wanted to talk with y'all tonight to see, if y'all are against it, it's dead, I can't do nothing about it, but if y'all are in agreement to it, like the lawyer said, well, we're, your senator here, and we'll get Schofield, and we'll get it, you know, we can get it worked out like that.
I'm actually not against it, but if the public that lives there and opt to speak on it, I wouldn't imagine if they're being serviced by Marshall County police and their kids are attending Marshall County schools, they wouldn't want to vote in Marshall County.
Yes, sir.
They're living in Jackson County, so I would like to give them an opportunity.
I'm happy you're just, I need to say something.
Do we pick up garbage in that area from Jackson County?
No, they don't, but I'm not going to say, I think, I think the public, well, the public services, but I don't know if they service your park.
How was this state before 1980? What did the record toll then?
It's always been in Jackson County.
No, sir, I don't think that's correct.
I'm told that- It's been in Jackson County since 1937.
It's been a long time.
1937.
My understanding was there was a legislator years and years and years ago that wanted it to be in Jackson County, and he had it changed where it went across, it's very strange.
It's very, it's very strange, it's very strange. How the, how this happened, TBA, can I get? Yeah. I made some copies, I don't know.
That's what I was wondering, I knew, you know, in the eighties, there had to be some kind of procedure that went on before then, how it stood.
You can kind of see, that's, that's TBA land right there, that's how they went across it. But not in the eighties, you know, somebody seen the problem that we're talking about today, and the lawyers about you. But that little part of TBA, when it comes across, that's how they touched, and that's how they come off of it, so.
I heard the same thing about the legislator back in the day.
Yeah, I did too, but I went and talked to TBA, and they pulled up their mail back in 1937. Now, it could have been, but it was, it was the way that it is today in 1937. Right, yeah. Yes.
So that's been like that a long time.
Been like that a long time.
Well, I think it just depends upon how you want to check with the citizens, if you want to set it for a work session, invite the public, and have a public hearing on it or something like that, if we can help, if we want to do it.
I've got, I talked to him at the golf course, and he said that's okay, but I told him I'd let him know tonight, after, after tonight, how, I know two weeks from today is holiday, and y'all are wanted after the work session, so I mean, it's whatever y'all want to do, whatever y'all want to have. 20th is next work session, but that's month of kings, the 21st, we could try to have a work session there on the 21st.
And I'm just more than commissioner, everybody-
Well, I just, I would have just thought we would, I mean, I would have assumed that we would have a, you know, community meeting, I wouldn't want to do this without bothering the community. So, is everybody good with the 21st?
Mr. Seas? Yes, is that going to give us enough time to get the public there to go with the residents and all?
That's, that's two weeks. And we, I've got the addresses, I just gave Mr. Porter, so we've got the address, we can off and-
Yeah, I just want to make sure they all get notified and we can do a little more discussion.
You know, there's some on there that's got land, but no house or nothing, so we got their physical address, we made an address, just send them one too, ones that owns the land there, without the residents.
And what, are these like summer vacation spots too?
Usually it's approximately 60 acres.
I'm more, that's, that's, that's what I, more or less, it's not, it's not that big of a place, I'm going to say 60, but. If everybody's good with the 21st, if you'll check and see if we can do the 21st at 6:00, and then we'll, I'll have our office send out the notices tomorrow, anyway, make sure everybody gets them. If you would, if you can get with me tomorrow, just maybe you can kind of coordinate the address. I talked to him this afternoon, he drives, he drives school buses, and I talked to him this afternoon at school, and he said that's fine. If you'll get with me tomorrow, okay, maybe you can get their own address. Okay. All right, so if everybody's good with that, we're just doing the 21st at 6:00 for a community meeting.
And you're going to have your work session down there?
Yes, yeah, we'll just have a work session there.
At 6:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next, the safety coordinator resolution, I suspect you want to say anything about that, or?
This county risk is just a bias, that any time we change the safety coordinator, and this is going to be, this is passing, that we have to have the resolution by the county commission to actually name it safety coordinator.
Okay. Mr. Porter, do you do that, or?
Yes, is, did you see the top of it?
I didn't.
So we just did this, we're changing for Mr. Asp, anyways.
If everybody's good, we'll put that on next week's meeting, and I'll have his meeting. Next, be the cleaning contract, Jackson County board.
She's on three months, it's running out, so we want to go six months this time.
Everything working out good, with her and everyone of his users?
Yes, there's a problem, she'll fix it.
Okay, that's good.
I'm not, and I don't complain, guy.
Nope. Not about that.
Yeah.
You want to complain?
Any more discussion on the cleaning contract?
So we're going to make it six months, right?
Yes. Everybody's good with that, we'll put that on next week's meeting. Getting to know your county government, Mr. Penable.
Yeah, attempt to be more open and transparent, I wanted us to start, maybe on the second and fourth, that's when our regular meetings are, they're a little shorter, and maybe after the meeting, we start with each department and go through that department's budget, maybe do revenue streams and expenditures for each one, and some of them, when they have to do expenditures on the second, and revenue streams on the fourth, and vice versa, but some of them, we're not going to do two in one act, because they're small, but they're going to see what everybody talks about possibly, doing that, going through sheriffs, public works, sanitation, everything, you know, the park, courthouse maintenance, council on agent, may take us a few months to get through all of them, and then we'll finish up with the county's general fund, and cash balances and everything. You hear a lot of rumors, you know, folks say that, you know, we're not being transparent, I don't know how we can be more transparent, and I thought this would be a good way for anybody that's willing to sit down and watch those meetings on YouTube, or come to the meetings, to get educated on, you know, where their tax dollars are going.
I talk to our folks, and they'll tell me, I don't see where y'all have a problem with money, y'all look after your, you know, the money that's bringing in, they have no idea of the money that goes out, and it's, everybody thinks for this 50 years.
I did talk to our IT guy, and he said that if we wanted to, that we do have the capabilities now, Facebook Live, and he can also be shooting the video, and then if we have a budget, he can also take that budget and put it up on screen, and split screen it, so that people can actually look at the numbers, where the money's going, so I think it'd be, I think it'd be the best way to get it out to the community, where they can actually see how much money's coming in and where it's going out to.
We need to get together, if everybody's going to agree that we're doing this, and make a schedule, who's going first, and I started as soon as possible, because if we run too long into it, you know, we'll get real busy trying to book a shop or do that, you know, then late June, July, so we'd like to get it done and be completely finished with it before it's in, as possible.
Good. If everybody would get us some thought, and maybe by next week's meeting, we'll try to get a date set up, and I'll be there, think about that, get more discussion on it. Anybody got any thoughts on it?
Something to add to that?
I think it's something that should happen, because, you know, it's like Mr. Penable said, so many people don't realize where the money goes, and some of the money we have, as in certain things, cannot be used for other issues, it kind of ties your hands, so, you know, the public needs to be aware of where it wants to take its place, because it is their money for hand.
I just think when we start to do it too, that we don't quickly just skim through it and say, this is X number of dollars here, X number of dollars there, we need to explain it. Some things that we may understand, like y'all kind of explained to us when we came aboard, what actually count 010 means, where it is, what's covered in that, and just if we're going to break down, take the time to explain it to people, and we just need to break it on down. If they're interested, they'll watch, they'll get bored, sorry.
I think the road part's going to take the longest, because it's our biggest fund, I mean, as far as the mountain line items, of where the money comes in, of where it goes out, what we can use for, what we can, and the sheriff's part will be the second, the worst one, but the rest of them, I think, can go pretty quick.
There might be something I can do to it, and then maintenance and some of that.
Yeah, part, like part would be one that'd be a bit harder to do, council on agent, council on agent's got a lot of different funds that feed it, but, I mean, it'd be pretty simple, showing how much money comes in, where it goes out to. You have any more, Mr. Penable?
No, I don't have any more.
All right, next, be reports for staff, Mr. Campbell?
I would just like to thank all the folks involved with emergency response effort during the storms, Paul and his team, chief deputy and the sheriff, your folks were out and now working, public works employees were out, signs, cut trees, we had office staff making sure payroll continued on through the holidays, and everybody got paid, so we have some fantastic people, I just wanted to mention appreciation for what they do, making sure everything is handled, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Porter?
All right, thank you. And my understanding is that we're going to maybe three to four more instances of rain this weekend, is that correct?
We could be back in a bad flood state by next month. Mr. Nash, you got anything to say?
No, sir, I don't.
All right, Mr. Seas?
Oh, yeah, I've got a few things, you know, we're starting off a new year, and I just like to say thanks to everybody that parties, that we seem to be moving forward, and you know, our hands seem like we're tied with the money, but you know, our employees appreciate everything they do throughout the county. One thing I wanted to mention, Jonathan, I wanted to question, see where we at on these highways, because I feel like the people have been very patient, I was surprised this past Saturday, breakfast, they are making an approach of a year anniversary, 93 still, nothing done, you know, they have been to us and addressed things, I wish you could kind of explain and see what's going on, I tried to explain to them at FEMA, but you know, they're looking at a little issue that, it's not a big thing, and I can understand when you go down and look at it, I feel like our public works could probably take that product there and move forward with it, you know, the part of 17, I know we're looking at a totally different bill, and I told them, I said, hey, y'all have to come, be a part of it anytime, but I said, I feel like you do, I said, I feel like I've kind of neglected you, I said, we have talked with them, we have met with them, I met with FEMA, Jonathan also myself, I said, I guess it's a drawn-out plan, but if you would, Jonathan, just kind of give us a little heads up on what has been done, please.
So, so nothing's changed strategically since the last time we, I guess, publicly talked or decided, which, you know, those directions can change from guidance of this body anytime, but the plan is still 17 first, which we do have two proposals in on that, and they're being evaluated currently. They are complex, I won't, I won't make any bones about that, one is basically a pile of muggins sold in a wall, and the other is a more complex system for that repair, so both require county involvement, one way more heavily, and so right now, we're still trying to understand the scope of all that's being proposed in one of those, and it's going to take construction easement consideration, borrow material consideration, and a place to discard material consideration in one of the proposals, so the next stage in that is to have conversations with the geotech contractors that have sent us these proposals, and understand their proposal as far as the problem, and what their solution is going to do to fix it, to make sure we can properly explain that to you guys and show the procedure. So hopefully we arrive, I feel confident that there's a solution in one of those two proposals that will fix this and fix it permanently, but it's going to be a bunch of work, and it's going to be a bunch of work that the county has to do, basically either way it goes, particularly with one. Once we, once we're underway with 17, the good news about a lot of county involvement is, we're going to get back those dollars less 20%, and we're going to need that money to move on to the projects like County Grove 93, and what's your discussion? So, as far as I'm concerned, the plan hasn't changed, 17 is the one we're focused on now, once we get that under our belt, then we plan to focus on 189, for the simple reason that it's, it's very similar to 17, but it's also the only way up and down for those residents that live on top of 189, then 93, then 38, so, I mean, I don't know if that answered your question, but that's, you know, that's, that's the route that we, that we have planned.
Well, I tried to explain to them, and you know, like I said, they have been very patient, and we're looking at a, a year kind of started like we had last year, erosion problems, and you know, from what I gathered, there was two houses that parked in the ground out there, and you know, they could not save them, and another thing, one guy, he's had a church pit, and he said, you know, it's cost me a lot in my business, and he said it's not only me, he said, the people, necessities, it's hurting them, you know, or it's having to travel back around, and I know the 17, there's, I talked to some people here last weekend, and you know, they're quite, quite a few miles that they live per week, per week, so, is there anything we as commission board can do to push FEMA further?
Um-
I mean, you know-
It's not as much a FEMA issue as it is a financial issue, I mean, we have a limited number of employees, and a limited number of equipment, and a very limited amount of money, and that's why we decided to take the course of action that we have, is do as much of it in-house as we can, because we can't afford to pay contractors to do the, to do the work, so we have to do 17 first, because we get our money back faster from 17, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but I don't, short of coming up with a new revenue source or additional dollars, I don't know how we could do anything any different than what we're doing, and the past rains we've had, the rains we have coming in this weekend, I just pray that we don't have any more, to sit on the back burner and hope that we can scrape together to fix.
So, so it's fairly complex, just in general, you know, it's unprecedented damage, number one, but like 17, if you think about the process we've gone through with 17, we first have to identify subsurface conditions to the best ability that we can, so that's where the geotech was involved, so if you think about the phases we went through on 17, once we identify that, then we have information to turn to the professionals on this, on how to repair it, okay? So all that same process has still got to take place at these other locations, and we could, we could go ahead and start that process, the geotech part, on some of those other locations, but be mindful that, you know, we're going to, we've got to pay for that, so I think it's wise to be a step ahead when it comes to the next location, but I would really, I would really feel more comfortable if that, if there's already revenue coming in from 17, before we turn and start shelling out for a large geotech professional service bill, because when this next advertisement, the way I foresee that going is all of the remaining locations, okay? So when we solicit that proposal for a professional service for that, we're going to say, do whatever it takes to tell us what's underneath and what's going on on 189, do the same for 93, and the same for 38, and oh, by the way, on 38, do we need to move the road over here? So, all of those things, it's probably going to be the same person, the last thing is, this will all be determined by you guys, but that'll be the same person, that'll all be the same bill as it progresses, so, once we know the problem in those locations, then we can turn and solicit a solution, but right now, we don't even know enough about the problem underneath the ground to even get a realistic proposal on how to fix it, okay? So, so just thinking about the same process we went on 17, all that's got to happen at each side, and then us get a proposal in, and then, you know, then we're dealing with FEMA, and just, just kind of as a for example, on the FEMA funded, it's not necessarily, I think, anything we can push on FEMA for, it's just the nature of the beast on their process, so we just received reimbursement on some of the projects, I think I mentioned that maybe the last meeting, those projects we received reimbursement on, that's projects that we had complete by time that it was even declared an emergency, okay? So if you think about from the time it was declared, to the time it was obligated to the state to provide money, that work was already done, right? So that waiting period is what we could expect, had we done that work, had we done it ourselves, let's say, and just started working on these slides, and not knowing what subsurface conditions are, and not knowing if we're going at it with the right fix or not, and done, got lucky maybe, and fixed it permanently, then we would still been at all those costs, a comparable amount of time to what we've experienced with the other projects till we received reimbursement, so, I mention all that because once the state is obligated the funds, and all these projects are in queue and have been waiting, they're getting reviews, and a lot of them are reviews, and they're doing their thing they have to do, once the funds are obligated to the state, hey, we can go to work and we can expect our money, but until that point, we're in the time that we're in now, where we're waiting for that.
I also want to make another point, without the engineering and the core drilling, and knowing what's taking place underground in these areas that are prone to slide, and slid before, and we're assuming a large responsibility and liability, if we go in there and just cosmetically fix this thing, and put a road surface back on it, I mean, it could slide onto a adjoining property, it could slide off, and somebody come along and run off in it, we're assuming a large, and I'm just not willing to just go in there and cosmetically fix something, personally, I think it needs to be fixed right when we fix it, or just see if it doesn't come up again.
I think that's the largest misconception, that we're just, just sitting there in our road department, just running there and taking a bulldozer and some dump trucks to fix it, when the truth is that we have to have these reports, we have certain laws that we have to go by, certain standards that we have to go by, we can't just go down there like a private entity and just throw a dozer on it, so, I can assure the public that we're working as fast as we can work with the funds that we've got to work with, and I mean, there's not one road that I wouldn't want to fix today, if we could, and I don't think there's no commissioner up here that wouldn't, if we had money to hire more people and more equipment, we'd put my-
I've had several people come to me, saying, why don't you just take your dozer and do that, just ready before we go through there. If I did that, and the fire truck comes down there and a load of water, guess what'll happen? It's going to spill over the side, you know, the responsibility, people just don't realize it.
I think when we unveil these proposals for 17, it'll shed some light on the complexity of this sheer repair of what we're talking about, 17 has been an issue probably ever since there's been a road there, I would assume, so I think, I think what we'll see is a fix that's permanent, and we won't have to- to worry about 17. So, with all of this discomfort and wait and pain that we're going through now, hopefully all that leads to a permanent repair, these things fixed properly, we have an opportunity to involve engineers, to find out all that we can about the problem, and permanently fix it to be done on that area, you know, these areas forevermore, hopefully.
Anything else on that?
Appreciate that, Jonathan.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sees, do you have anything else?
No, no, I just wanted to bring it up because, I mean, you, you live out there in that area and I feel like it's definitely been done, and, you know, that is just a small looking little project it looks like, and, you know, I, I guess I look at these things and I can kind of see where, where they're coming from, and, uh, you know, we've seen some major things like coming across 79 off Skyline, you know, they've come in and fixed it probably 15 times here in the last 30 years, and then it's going to fall off right now, basically. And, uh, Four Mile Post Road, you know, they, they opened it up there a few weeks ago, now they necessarily don't, they shut it back down, so, you know, seems like, you know, even if you do go do a geotest and all them things, by the nature of, when she calls, it, it takes, it takes over sometimes.
I've, I've lived out there 51 years, how long have you lived out there?
One current.
Dallas. So-
Longer than that.
Yeah, longer than that. It's an inconvenience, it really is an inconvenience for some of the folks out there. Like I said, I've lived there all my life, I know it is, and, and I, I hate to say inconvenience there, but, but they still have a, a good state route to go down and, you know, I actually drove it myself from the fire department down to 93 one of the state highway. Well, then if you go fire department, back roads to 93, go off a mountain, it's about six minutes difference. So it is, there is an inconvenience, uh, and I want to get it fixed as fast as we can, but I, I don't think it's hindered any fire departments from putting fires out, because I would think, I mean, based upon that timing, the fire truck would move faster on the state highway on a straight road faster than they could on a curvy road one off that mountain.
I've drove down it there, sir, I mean, the vertes have been blew and, you know, they've been driving across it, and, uh, you know, it's still, still where you go across it. Um, but, you know, I, I like to see us, that's why I just asked Jonathan, oh, he'd done all he could do, but I wondered if there's anything we could do, push it, push it up some. They're in need, and, uh, I, I don't feel like I've done anything to give service to them, but you can't push it, you know?
Mr. Ford, I forgot you, did you have anything else to say?
Yeah.
Let's go.
I had a couple of questions for Mr. Campbell. When you were talking about 17 discarding materials, would that be a temporary staging or a permanent place to put the materials that we dig out, to get down to core of the problem?
It's going to be unclassified excavation that will have to be wasted, assuming, assuming we go with one of the proposals, so.
I was just, those materials, if you give it some thought, they would help in some other areas fill in on some of our other slides, was just a thought.
The, um, the, the primary goal of that would be finding a close opportunity to that location where we can discard that material. It's going to be a, a large amount of trucking, if that's it, if that's the route we go, a lot of material that we need to be disposed of.
Yeah, my other question, I was going to ask you a statement, was on the geotech on 93, 38, and 189. That is subject to change with the more rain we get, so we do need to wait for closer to time to do the actual work, right?
Possibly, I, I, and I'm just drawing from information I gather from on-site and being the in-service student, I think 189 is going to be very similar to 17, I think it's car stativity, something along those lines. 93, possibly a combination of that, but more so traditional slide, and the same for 38, it's probably more of a traditional slide. But the slides, having said that, the slides will, if there's a, if there's subsidence and there's a crack, and it's, and it experiences water infiltration, then yes, that could worsen. As far as the scope to fix it, I don't think, I don't really think that changes the game of it, but, um, obviously water infiltrating something that's cracked open, it's not, it's not getting better.
Well, thank you for that information, and just want to say thank you, I've had nothing but praise from the public for y'all being out the other night from the sheriff's department to Mr. EMS and you guys, Paul, yeah, I was going to say Mr., but Mr. Paul. And, um, but anyway, having you guys out in all hours and that and all kind of conditions, thank you very much, and it, that's what it brings, people have been, they were out here, they got it out of the way, they were out here, they fixed it, they were out here, the signs were up, my teenager was safe, thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that, I'll make sure they know the folks that were out there doing that, thank you.
I think we've covered everything pretty good, so everybody have a happy new year, since this is the first meeting of the new year. Mr. Rich?
I just want to add to the, uh, out there on Road 93, I went out there about a month ago, and somebody in a truck curb is dumped, I bet you took right out of the tires, you know, car tires, truck tires, just stopping a curb. They might be something, some of the drainage that you can, like to go out there and detour to where that water will just keep be running right beside the road and raveling or rubbing it away, I'd like to look at that and see, but, uh, I'd like to find out who's dumped the tires in there too. If anybody sees it, let me know. Yeah, really good, but that's all, y'all doing a great job during these storms, I hope everybody stays safe and hope we don't get another four or six inches of rain myself. Just glad everybody's out and everybody got everything that they're, I appreciate it.
Everybody wish Ruckie a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ruckie.
Mine's next Tuesday, I'm a rubber.
Miss Gilbert's next Tuesday, so happy birthday to you. If there's nothing else, I'll have Bush to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn, sir.
You're second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.